Good evening, everybody. We call this meeting to order, and we will start with Suzanne in the rule call.
Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Protim Harvey. Carlson.
Matthews.
Here.
Mella.
Here.
Sawyer.
Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, if everyone will stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start with appointments to the Park and Rec Advisory Board, and Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have two of the incumbents from the Parks and Recreation Board Advisory Board here this evening. They are reapplying, we had three vacancies, and the two incumbents reapplied, and so we'd like to appoint them this evening. It is Bill Sinclair and Patrick Pine. We did the advertising as council requests on Facebook, Channel 10, the website, and we're going to continue to keep advertising for this one vacant position.
Terrific, let's proceed.
I would like to have Patrick Pine and Bill Sinclair join me up at the podium. Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
I know, I know who you guys are. Okay, so if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Bill Sinclair.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
The duties of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
About which I am about to enter.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you for reapplying.
Okay. Do you need a signature?
I do. So I need you to sign right here, and then the one underneath, and get two.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your service, we appreciate it. I'm looking at Cindy and wondering if she's got the big smile because she's happy with these two guys, or? Good, 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 good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that brings me to Ms. Keating to recognize Donna Engel.
So the one vacant position we have on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is the position that Donna Engel has held on the board for eighteen years. Donna began her career with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as a Master Plan Task Force member in 1997. In the past eighteen years, Donna has been part of several community projects. The development of the 1997 Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan, along with the updates in 2007. The completion of the Centennial Trail and Trailhead. The development of Cavalier Park, Crestwood Park, and Red Mountain Adventure Park. Additions to Meadowwood Sports Complex, the tennis courts, the improvements to the hockey rink, and the synthetic turf baseball and soccer fields. And most recently, the Memorial Park Redevelopment Master Plan. Donna has done more than just sat on the park board, she's always the first one to volunteer to help with our special events through Parks and Recreation. So Donna, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and myself, we want to let you know that we thank you for your years of service, and you're going to sincerely be missed. So Donna, can you join me at the podium? And Mayor, could you join me at the podium to present her award?
Donna, on behalf of all of us here today, and certainly in the city of Woodland Park, we truly appreciate everything you've done for us. You will be missed, and I can tell in Cindy's voice that this is an emotional time, and we will really miss you, and we thank you so much for your contribution to our community.
Well, thank you.
You bet. Thank you very much. See, Donna, one more thing, let me just award you with the mayor's pin while you're here for all the same reasons.
Well, thank you.
We really appreciate your...
I heard that was proud.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you so much. You bet.
Just one last comment, Donna just whispered in my ear, "I'm still going to be around." And one thing, at the Pro Challenge race last year, Donna was one of our volunteers, and what she whispered in my ear was, "I'll still be around and I'll ring some bells." What she did is she helped us move cowbells, Pro Challenge cowbells, on the race day. She probably got rid of at least 500 of those cowbells for us on that day, so you can come help us ring bells anytime, Donna. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cindy. Okay, we will move on to number 4C, and this will be my favorite part of the evening. We get to award a bunch of young students in our community, and Laura Pellegrino, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. I'm not going to say much, I am going to introduce Dan Sloan from the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee, and he will speak to you.
Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, a little bit of background history on the bear aware art contest. It is rotated between elementary schools here in Woodland Park, Columbine, and Gateway. This year was Gateway Elementary School. It was submitted to grades kindergarten through fifth. The bear aware tips and contest rules were provided by our teacher, Ms. Lehman, who I know is in the audience. The Keep Woodland Park Beautiful and District Wildlife Officer Bearware Group presentations to all the grades was during the spring break this year, during the school's spring break vacation, and they were due tonight on April 16th, 2015. We had 58 drawings that were submitted, and the voting took place at the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful meeting on April 6th. A couple of the rules that were included for the art drawings were the children had to demonstrate a bear aware tip in the drawing. They were required to use a colored pencil or crayon, and notate their name and grade on the back of the drawing. And I will start with the... Okay, yep, Mayor.
Could we call?
You come down and present the awards, please. Okay. Right in the middle, sir. If I could have the kindergartner winner, and if I mispronounce these names, I truly apologize, Callie Bonney?
It's Fonei.
Fonei?
Yes.
First grade winner is Sam Costner. Second grade winner is Destiny Morris. The third grade winner is Logan Olson. The fourth grade winners, because we had a tie, was Connor Smith and Angelina Peterson. And the fifth grade winner was Halana Fisher.
Okay, in addition, for these wonderful students, they're all going to receive a mayor's pin, which I hope they wear with pride, and I just want to congratulate all seven of you and continue the great work. I will say this, I know you're art teachers pretty well, and there's nobody better in our system than Laura Lehman, so let's give everybody a big round of applause. Okay, thank you all very much. We will let them leave in peace. Okay, we will continue. I believe there's no additions or deletions or corrections to the agenda tonight, and so we will move on to the consent calendar, and Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have three items for the consent calendar, the first being the April 2nd regular council meeting minutes. The second item is the February 2015 Statement of Expenditures and Authorization to Allow the Mayor to Sign the Warrants. And the third one is a contract on behalf of Bill Alsbach for cornerstone paving in the amount of $53,329 for steel coating of Meadowwood Sports Complex parking lot and other projects.
Sounds good, can you tell me when that's going to be done, Sally? Or, no, okay.
The paving, the resurfacing, I'm not sure of the schedule. They typically try to get in early in the summer as they possibly can.
Can they do it when there's snow on the ground?
No, they can't.
Okay. Move to approve the consent calendar? Second. There we go, we got a motion and a second, and Suzanne?
Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we're going to move on to number seven, unfinished business, and we have none tonight, so we'll go to ordinances on initial posting, and we're going to consider ordinance number 1239, excuse me, and Laura, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This is a consideration of ordinance number 1239 on initial posting, as requested by Michael Weber, who is the property owner. It's to vacate the common interior lot line between the two lots that he owns, lots three and four, Paradise of Colorado filing number one, with an address of 231 and 241, Thunder Ridge Drive, in the suburban residential SR Zone District. And it's also a request to set the second reading and public hearing for May 7th, 2015.
Thank you, any questions? This is just on initial posting, but if there are any questions, if not, we will call for a motion, and thanks, Laura. Motion to approve ordinance number 1239 on initial posting. Second. Terrific. Suzanne?
Thank you. Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to 8B, and we're going to consider ordinance number 1240, Mr. Buttery?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 1240 would be the authorization for the city to enter into certificates of participation for the Memorial Park renovation project. This is on initial posting. Council will recall in our earlier discussions, we felt that we would bond for the Aquatic Center debt, and that we would issue certificates of participation using the Police Operations Center and the Public Works Facility as collateral for the improvements at Fleet Maintenance and Memorial Park. Council will recall that we were fortunate enough to receive a rather large grant from DOLA, which will allow us to pay for the Fleet Maintenance Project with cash. That's good news. That's going to lower our debt, it will allow us to put a little more money to the park and a little more money to the Aquatic Center. Now, this particular ordinance will allow us to move forward with the certificate of participation process for Memorial Park project only. I would request that you approve ordinance 1240 on initial posting, and allow us to set the public hearing for a date no later than May 7th. This is a little bit different than what we usually do. We usually give you a date certain when we would bring this back. May 7th is our next council meeting. If we are successful in getting the process done early, I'm going to ask the council for a special meeting, perhaps we do it in concert with some other meeting, to have the public hearing on this ordinance, so that we can save time in the COP process, so that we can begin construction as early as possible on Memorial Park. It would be posted, everything would be legitimate. You'll recall, this is a five Thursday month, so that costs us a week in process time. Not sure if we're going to get there, we're working very hard with our bond counsel and our financial advisor to see if we can. So my request is that you approve it on initial posting, and we set the public hearing for a date no later than May 7th. May I answer any questions for you?
Sounds simple enough. So moved, second.
Mella?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to public hearings, and before we do that, I'm going to make this announcement. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is commonplace of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communication during the public hearing. With that, I will bring back Laura Pellegrino to approve ordinance number 1238. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This is an application received by Mr. Court Wall, who is the current property owner and has been the property owner since November of 2014. Mr. Court Wall is in the audience tonight, and although he does not have a presentation, he is available to answer questions should any council member have a question of him. This is an application, CUP 15-001. It has one lot, it's part of Block 6, Foster's addition to Manitou, now Woodland Park, in R15 of Card 711A in the Teller County Clerk and Recorder's Office. This particular lot has four addresses. It is addressed from 105, 107, 109, and 111 on South Boundary Street here in the city of Woodland Park. The total lot size is approximately 0.28 acres in size, approximately 12,300 square feet, of which 1,414 square feet is residential square footage, and 3,128 is commercial square footage. It is in the community commercial, the CC Zone District here in Woodland Park. This applicant is applying for simply uses that are approved as conditional uses within the CC Zone District. He does not propose any new construction or any other new development related to this application request, so this is truly just an application to allow him to perform or rent out the spaces and form the uses associated with the uses that he's applied for. And they're listed on the screen, and they're also in the staff report. The uses he's proposing and proposing to receive approval of are E1, which is appliance repair and household improvements, F4, which is auto repair, G1, which is contractor and construction services, N1, which is single-family residential dwelling units, which he's proposing two on this site, V1, which wholesale trade and distribution, and V2, which is commercial warehousing and storage. These are all conditional uses that are permitted subject to approval from council pursuant to Section 18.09.090 of the municipal code. This is a general location, the site here is pretty much in the downtown area, a little bit on the east end of the downtown area in terms of the proximity to the Woodland Park area. This is a better map showing the neighborhood layout and some of the existing uses around the site. The site is this blue dot right here, and you can see that just immediately to the west is Boundary Street, and to the north is Midland Avenue. The high school is immediately to the east, just on the other side of Baldwin, and again, the site is right here. So it's in a fairly developed, older neighborhood in the city of Woodland Park. This is a close-up showing some of the surrounding existing uses. You can see to the north is a single-family dwelling, which is owned by Anderson Contracting, and it is currently occupied as a single-family residence. Immediately to the north and to the east is a vacant single-family dwelling with four sheds. I don't know why they have four sheds, but they have four little neat sheds in the back. Immediately to the south and east is the Colorado Forest Service Office, and to the west are occupied single-family dwellings and the CIRK Physical Therapy Office. So there are existing surrounding single-family residences in this area, and existing surrounding businesses in this area. This is a typical zoning map, it is the zoning map for this area. You can see that the site itself is this rectangle right here, which is circled in red, which is difficult to see, but it is the pink, which is the Community Commercial Zone District, which is a strip along pretty much the east end of the downtown area. To the east of that is the Public Semi-Public Lands Zone District, which is the school and the high school in that area. And then immediately to the west is the Central Business District. So this site is in the Community Commercial Zone District. Here's a picture of the overall site, showing the two residences going from left to right, that the one on the left is currently occupied, there is a family living in that one, and the one in the middle, the one structure in the middle, is vacant currently, but the applicant doesn't intend to rent it out as a single-family residence. And then at far right on the picture, you can see a small part of the commercial building. And here is a better view of the commercial building, showing the two bays that are available, as well as immediately attached, and you can only see the roof on this picture, but right here is the roof of a more storage space that is allocated for this commercial building.
Question?
Uh-huh.
The auto repair work will be done in that last picture you showed, those two bays?
Yes. Those would be the ones where it would be logical to put any auto repair.
Not outside.
You know, the auto repair use does allow for some outside storage, let me just confirm that.
Yeah, it's under F4, I think.
Yeah.
You can't put junk or junk cars or junk parts out there. Correct?
No, you wouldn't be able to put junk cars and that kind of stuff, but there is some limited outdoor storage, and it is auto repair uses with some outside storage, so there would be some limited ability for outside storage, but any outside storage would have to be screened.
Is there any limit to how many vehicles could be stored outside in other than parking slots?
I don't think vehicles would be allowed to be stored outside, I think the vehicles themselves would be inside, I think outside storage only relates to parts, perhaps.
All right.
So this is a picture showing the streetscape from the site looking north on Boundary Street. Gives you an idea of what this neighborhood looks like, some of the infrastructure that's in place. You'll notice that there is no curb and gutter, no sidewalk immediately adjacent to this site, or even further up the street. So it's a typical streetscape. This was the site plan that was submitted with the application, and it was also submitted with the staff report that you should have received. This lays out the parking, a potential parking scenario, given all the different uses this applicant is proposing. What it's showing is a potential for 14 parking spaces. Of course, the uses that he ultimately rents out here will depend on the parking that he can provide for his clients. So, you know, it's possible to do two single-family residences, and you have to provide two parking spaces per resident, and then you would have to determine how many, you know, if you're separating the bays, or if you're separating the storage area, and one's going to be warehouse, or one's going to be auto retail, or auto repair. It would depend on parking in terms of how he rents out his space, and he's well aware of that. He's showing a scenario with 14 spaces, staff does not object to that, there is one accessible space, and that's all that's required. There is one accessible space and that's all that's required. On this site plan, it's important to notice that as staff was reviewing the application, there were some setback encroachments that we identified and also some property encroachments. And what you'll see on the site plan that's on the, on display and also was included in your pack are some areas that are highlighted in red. If you go to the north bubble, the one in red, you can see that the single-family residence encroaches on the property to the north, which is Anderson Contracting property. This is an issue that we acknowledge as the city, but we really don't get involved in these issues between property owners. It is an existing building. We're not going to ask the applicant to move these buildings. We're not going to ask him to do anything about that. It's existing, non-conforming. We ask that he work with the adjacent landowner to resolve this issue. And he has been in communication with that landowner. And as a matter of fact, that landowner came to the Planning Commission public hearing and spoke in favor of this application. So they are working together.
But there's no agreement in place now?
Not that I'm aware of. I know they are working on something. The bubble that's showing on the corner here is an encroachment on the fence. And there's just a, you can see the fence kind of encroaches. It's not on the property line. It's sort of inside the other boundary, which happens to be the lot owned by the Colorado State Forest Service. They built that fence. So the argument is that they built it knowing that it's on their property. It's not on the property line. So the applicant believes it's not an encroachment, and that's a valid argument. If the Colorado State Forest wishes to build a fence within their property anywhere, that's well within their right, and that's perfectly fine. So while that may look like an encroachment, it need not be. There is the final encroachment, which is this chain link fence, which encroaches on the Boundary Street right-of-way next to the second residence. Staff has looked at that encroachment, really doesn't have any objections to it, has existed for a long time. We are not requiring that he remove that fence or relocate it or anything. If staff or utilities has to go in there and remove that fence, the applicant will be subject to any fees or any charges that are associated with that, and the fence will not be allowed to be relocated as it currently exists in its encroachment.
Would you point that out again, please?
It is this little fence that's shown in this bubble, and it just encroaches, you know, probably six inches, 12 inches into the right-of-way. But certainly not into the paved right-of-way. Okay. So those are just some items that staff identified in doing our review. In doing our review, it's important to remember that with this application, the applicant is not proposing any new construction or any new development. He is simply asking for the permission to conduct those conditional uses, which require council approval. Staff conducted a review according to the C C Zone District, which is section 1821 of the municipal code. We found it complies with all of these requirements, including the conditional uses that he's asking for, the height requirements of all the buildings, the yards, the frontage, the parking, the fencing, any signage, sidewalks, and landscaping. Applies with all of those regulations, and staff does not oppose or object to any of the application as submitted. Staff sent the application out on referral to various entities, including Woodland Park Utilities, Public Works, and the Field Inspector. We also sent them out to, sent it to external agencies like the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, I R E A, Black Hills, BAC Cable, and Century Link. The only substantive written response received was from I R E A, which simply said, "We're going to maintain our existing electrical easements as they exist, unless the applicant wants something different." And that's a pretty standard reply from I R E A. So really, there's no concerns from any referral entities. We also published notice of tonight's hearing through a poster on the site that has existed pursuant to the regulations. We also sent adjacent property notices, and we published tonight's hearing in the Pike's Peak Courier. Staff received no written concerns, no opposition to this application as submitted. Staff believes it complies with all of the C U P standards in section 1857-040 A and B of the municipal code, which are the 11 conditional use permit requirements and standards that must be met. So they are listed here in brief, that there is a need for these conditional uses in order to provide the flexibility that this applicant is allowing for or requesting, and in order to fill the need for the market to have the kind of spaces that the applicant is proposing. The second condition is that there's no detriment to public health, safety, and welfare, that there's no detriment to property values, that it harmonizes with the area, that it harmonizes and complies substantively with the city plan, that it complies with the city regulations, that there's no substantive traffic impact, drainage impact, water, sewer waste have all been addressed, and that there are no hazards associated with this potential development, and that it meets any architectural design standards. And again, remember that this applicant is not proposing any changes to the development, no construction is proposed. He does state that he has maintained the two residents and the residences that exist, so he is very capable and able and willing to comply with any general maintenance and property upkeep requirements such as they exist. Staff does find substantial appliance with all the standards and does recommend approval with conditions of this conditional use permit. I have here posted three conditions. The application and the public hearing statements are binding, and the applicant is subject to any statements he makes in his application and in tonight's hearing. The second condition is that there is no commercial outer storage on the residential lawn areas behind the residences or in front of the residences that are devoted to the residences. And there is no outside storage in any front yard. That's commercial storage as well. Outside storage shall be screened from all public view. So if there is any outside storage, it will be required as per this condition to be screened. Condition number three is inspection for and installation of black backflow prevention device for the commercial building, and the applicant is aware of this condition and has begun that process to get that installation in place. This application did go to the Planning Commission on March 26, 2015. They did recommend unanimous approval of the application, but did suggest one additional condition, and that is that any snow storage not be on the handicap space, which staff agreed to, and is added as a condition in the ordinance. That is staff's report. Are there any questions from council?
Yeah. Just following up on the parking issue. You indicated a maximum allotment of 14 spaces, but given the variety of mixes in this proposed use, do you have a feel for, is there a kind of a permutation of mixes that result in the need for more than 14 spaces?
There could be. You know, he could, he could do all as, use the entire commercial area as auto repair, which wouldn't make sense, given that the last bay is more of a storage than a bay. And then he may not be able to meet the parking requirements. So it all depends on the tenants he gets in there.
So he, and I'm really less interested in what makes sense, but what might happen? What would happen in the instance where there's a change in use that he needed 18, 20, 22 spaces?
Well, I'll have to say that this applicant is very communicative with staff, and he's, every time he gets a prospective tenant, he comes and talks to us to make sure that it will work and that it fits. If the situation or scenario should arise, that perhaps he has a tenant that is parking and overflows parking onto the street, and there's an issue, it would become an enforcement issue, and we enforce the conditions and the representations of this conditional use permit.
Secondly, in the matrix letter, inclusion states that the proposed and historical trips are negligible, the conclusion of Mr. Smith. But if you look at the trip generation historic uses compared with the proposed, we have a total of average weekday historically of 51. And if you add the three new sections, I get a total of 72 weekday, which there's no total down there as there is in the first graph. So now we're looking actually at a 50% increase.
Well, actually, Commissioner Mella, if you take, council member, Mella, I'm sorry. If you take a look at the first chart, it's divided into the historic representation of average weekdays, divided into single-family residential and general light industrial. In the second chart, he's only looking at the general industrial, and he breaks it down, so he's not even including the family. So truly, when you look at the historical general light industrial, it's 22 average weekday. Then you look at the general light industrial, automobile care center, and the warehousing, and it's 25. It increases only by three average vehicle trips on any given day. So the residential won't change, is...
That's held constant, in effect.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I think it's admirable that he comes to staff and talks to you about tenants and so forth, but from an enforcement standpoint, how is that handled? I mean, for him or maybe a future owner that he could sell to, unless they come to you and say, "We're going to use this use, we're going to do this use," therefore spaces change, how do you know? I mean, do we need something that says once they, anytime they do change a tenant or add a tenant, that they need to review that with staff? I mean, it's great that he's doing voluntarily, but we have no guarantee of that. Is that right?
Right. There's no guarantee of that. You're right. And a future property owner may not go through that kind of diligent review process. Truly, it would be an enforcement issue, so if we get a complaint, we would take a look at it and we would notify the property owner, whether it's this one or the tenant, that there is an issue with parking and it needs to be rectified.
So it'd only come up if there's a complaint at the current steps?
Or if anyone on the city council or staff notices an issue.
Is it possible that we should add a condition that says any change in tenancy should be reported to the city, to planning staff? Is that possible? Yeah, how better to handle that?
It certainly is possible, if that's council's desire, but we deal with this every day. We have over 300 businesses here in town, each that came to us with a particular plan in mind. And as those things change, if there's an issue, it comes to us for resolution. So we absolutely are a reactive code enforcement. We try to be reasonable with folks who want to do business. We think we're looking at the best, most likely scenario. Is it the worst-case scenario? Probably not, but it's probably the most reasonable scenario. It's just like any of our businesses that may have more customers on any given day. It's an Easter Sunday kind of thing. We build the parking lots for every Sunday, but some days, there's going to be more people there. And there may be a use, and if it becomes an issue, then we would ask the applicant to perhaps work with the Forest Service to see if there could be a shared parking agreement. And remember, on-street parking is allowed. On-street parking through most of the city is absolutely allowed. And so there probably are three or four spaces on boundary that could be, have been counted, but staff chose not to do that. I would rather not impose a restriction that would cause the applicant to rethink whether this is even a doable process, when this is an issue that really is relatively simple. But it's council's decision.
And staff doesn't believe it's necessary. I would concur with everything Mr. Butterey said.
And just to confirm, you've had no negative feedback from any of the neighbors? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And they were, those who were at the council, Planning Commission meeting were in sport?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And Phil thinks about this relative, relative to the encroachment on the north end where Mr. Anderson is, and there's no agreement there. If Mr. Anderson decides to leave, do you see any potential problems there with that encroachment? And do you think there should be an agreement in place?
That's truly an issue between the two property owners, and the city doesn't want to be involved in any agreement, nor do we even want to be involved in the negotiations. I know that they are speaking together and that there's probably a good likely outcome that will come of this, but that's a good question to ask Mr. Wall when he comes up, if you'd like to get more details on that.
And just to reply to Mr. Butterey, I appreciate the kind of approach to making this as simple as possible and to keeping the magnitude of a prospective issue in the appropriate context. That said, my discomfort is starting, and businesses do grow and they change, and so sometimes things change in the evolution of a business. But beginning out of the chute with an approved process that does have a reasonable, reasonable likelihood of causing a parking problem is a concern. So I just register that and I'll ponder it some more. Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Okay, if not, we appreciate it, and let's bring up the applicant and may have other questions for him.
Hi, my name's Court Wall. Live at 119 Circle Drive, Woodland Park. Appreciate you listening to the rezoning that we want to do. And listening to what you were talking about, Carl Anderson and I have been in contact. We've got a surveyor going on the property whenever he frees up to find out if the exact survey is an actual encroachment, being that this was just an I L C. So that's in the process, and Carl and I are going to work it out and record it, whatever we got to do.
And my issue wasn't so much with you and Carl, but the possibility of him leaving someone else coming in and then having an issue at that point.
We'll be taking care of it before he, if he's thinking about selling it. I need to get it taken care of before this matter. It'll be taken care of.
Thank you.
Just, we've discussed it a little bit. The auto repair, I think, is always somewhat of a concern or possible issue, and how much of that would be done outside interview? It sounds like we're taking care of a lot of that because it has to be screened. But from your perspective, how much work is, would, or would any work be done outside?
I don't think any work would be done outside unless they were changing a couple tires, but all the vehicles would be inside the building. The mechanicals would be inside, nothing outside, no lifts or anything, no storage outside.
No cars up on jacks and things like that overnight or anything?
Not, not so far. So we're fully aware of what can go in and what can't go there, and I'm in contact with Sally and Laura, and it's been a long process.
All right. Thank you.
So just to specify, the regulation is that cars cannot be outside? Can I get a clearance on that, Sally?
That's correct. It says that any auto repair must be done inside and that there is no outside storage of junk motor vehicles and/or vehicle parts.
Great. Thank you. Do you have lifts in the bays?
No, they're just blank, they're just open warehouses. There's nothing inside either one. So far.
Mr. Wall, do you have, currently, do you have prospective tenants?
I have one of the sides rented to a guy that's been keeping his truck in there and keeping a tank inside from freezing. These warehouses have bathrooms and heaters in each side. So it just keeps the, his tank for, he cleans carpets and stuff, so the tanks don't freeze.
John, anything else?
I know I'm coming in here late. Hi, Court, how are you?
Good.
I actually don't have any questions. I think I looked it over pretty good, and everything seems in order. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Appreciate it, Mr. Wall. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for considering this.
Council, any other questions? Any other discussion? Phil, you have that look on your face. I know, still grappling with it. Thank you. No more questions. Okay, if no more questions, then we'll call for a motion to approve ordinance. I'm sorry.
Public comment.
If we do have public comment, this would be the time. Would anybody like to come forward at this time? Okay, if not, then we will move forward and...
I would move approval of ordinance 1238 as presented.
Second. No other questions, Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura. Thanks, Mr. Wall. Good luck to you. We appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to number 10, a new business, and Sally Riley.
Thank you. This new business is a temporary use permit request from the Relay for Life team that is planning an event on June 12th at the Midland Pavilion next to the U Pass Cultural Center. This is a change in their location this year. It's a Friday evening. They plan on starting the event at 4:00 PM in the afternoon and going until midnight. Whenever a temporary use permit is after 9:00 in the evening, then it is required for the city council to review the application and to determine or grant permission for this temporary use to move forward. The staff has asked the event planning team to stop their bands and sound system at 10:15 at night. They do have a... 10:15 at night. They do have a walking route around the area that includes the cultural center and around the library. They have a number of teams that set up and take turns as they follow this sidewalk pathway route. They've done a good job of contacting the adjacent businesses to make sure that they're in agreement with closing off of Midland Avenue and that everyone who is going to be participating will be carefully monitored and there'll be good safety in this area. So they'll be barricading off certain portions of the parking lots and allow for people to walk safely through their event. So at 10:15, they've agreed that they will have a quiet event, go till midnight. They do have the cultural center reserved, so they can move their activities inside if need be. And the applicant is here this evening. We have Kyle Schultz with the Relay for Life, as well as Mike Easley, and we have Bunny Sebula as well. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd like for the applicant to approach the podium.
That'd be great.
Sally, could you mention the significance of 10:15?
Thank you.
There's a precedent for that?
That's what I was going to ask.
Oh, yes, thanks. Last year, we did Movies on the Green a couple of months, and it was determined with the neighborhood that a 10:15 time limit was appropriate for that event. So we have a precedent set for the 10:15.
Is there a reason why it's so late at night?
We can let Tyler answer that.
Yes.
Well, that's kind of the tradition of Relay for Life.
Excuse me, Tyler, before you move forward, I'm sorry. Could you just state your name and your address for the record, please?
Uh, my name is Tyler Schultz. I actually live in Manitou Springs at 106 North, or Washington Avenue. And in terms of answering your question, Relay for Life has been going on for thirty years now. There's over fifty-two hundred events throughout the country and over four million participants throughout the country. And it all kind of started as an overnight walking event. Up until this year, the event has been, it's been here for twenty-three years here in Woodland Park, and it has been overnight each year. This is the first year we've decided to change that event time, just because of kind of the way that the community works around here and how that seems just more appropriate for the community. But we still did want to have it from four until midnight because we do have one particular ceremony that's very special. We call the luminaria ceremony, where, once it's dark, so around nine, nine-thirty-ish, we have the lights come off and we have luminaria bags, white bags that are decorated in honor and memory of loved ones who are, have been lost to cancer, or survivors who want to celebrate their life. And we have that particular ceremony that is important, that is dark outside for that. So, we have that ceremony, and then that ends about ten, ten-fifteen-ish or something like that. The entire event is a very happy and upbeat event. That particular moment is a very special moment in the event. It's also, can be a sombering moment. It's a time to reflect on those who have been lost. So, we don't, we don't end the event with the luminaria ceremony. We always have kind of a continuation, a little bit longer after that. So that's why we kind of came up with the midnight this year, because we knew, we didn't want to go overnight like it has been in the past, but we did want to have some time to do some things after the luminaria ceremony was completed.
Wow, sounds great. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. I know we had some discussions, you and Mike and I, and at the outset, and there were some issues last year, not the least of that there wasn't as much participation. How are we doing this year? Things moving along?
Yeah, we're doing well. We're always looking for more participants. So, anyone interested in making a team and coming out to the event, or, you know, anything like that, we're always looking for more people to come and join us. Hopefully getting the fire department and police department involved. They're, both might possibly create a team. But right now, we're at, I think, about eleven teams and not sure exactly how many participants, but we're hoping for a couple hundred participants. And if we can get up to about twenty, twenty-five teams, that would be awesome. That's the goal.
Well, great job. Thank you very much. Questions? Anybody else have questions?
And you do clean up after this event, I noticed.
Yep, yep, I'll do cleanup.
Until 2:00 AM.
Yep, yeah, the event will end at midnight, and then we've got a lot of helpers and volunteers. We got some Boy Scouts are going to be helping out, and a whole bunch of different people, all the teams as well. And we're gonna, hopefully, a lot of times, they end up being pretty quick cleanups, because after, after the entire event, people are ready to get home and get to sleep. So, they're pretty quick about it.
John, would you like to volunteer for that twelve to two shift?
Oh, I think I have a commitment already.
It's called sleep. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, if no other questions, call for a motion.
Move to approve, as stated, the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, June 12th.
Second. I'll second that.
Great. Suzanne?
Schaefer?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thanks very much. And you all know, if you need any further help, please, please let David or myself know. We'll do everything we can to help. It's a great event, and we hope we get better participation, raise more money than we have in the past. So, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 11, public comment. And we have none on my list here. Does anybody have anything to say that didn't sign up? Okay, we'll move on to reports. I have a number of announcements to make tonight, so bear with me. Saturday, April 18th, Teller Senior Center Monthly Pancake Breakfast. It's $6. It's from eight to 11 o'clock. It's always very well-attended, and it's a great event. So, this Saturday, hopefully, it's not snowing. After enjoying breakfast at the Senior Center, you can deliver your old electronics to support the Woodland Park Panther Recycling Program at reduced rates. Woodland Park Middle School Parking Lot, and that's from 10 o'clock to 2:00. Woodland Park at the middle school. Tuesday, April 21st, at the Country Lodge, will be the Chamber Business After Hours. That starts at 5:30. It's always a very well-attended event. And on the 22nd, the Chamber has Business Roundtable at the U-Pass Cultural Center from 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning. And you can call the office to register, 687-9885. Saturday, April 25th, is the 16th Annual Early Childhood Kit Fest, also at the U-Pass Cultural Center. It's a free event, and it's from 9:00 AM until noon. Thursday, April 30th, is an important event. There's a public meeting, the only public meeting, on the final concept design for the Woodland Aquatic Center. Actually, we'll have two meetings that day at the, in council chambers, right here, at 1:30 and at 6:30. So, anyone from the public that would like to come and comment on the pool design, this will be your chance.
Could you give, give me that date again, please?
I'll be glad to. April 30th, that's Thursday. We'll have one at 1:30, and we'll have the second one at 6:30.
Thank you.
Friday, May 1st, the annual donkey basketball game, sponsored by the Lions Club High School Auditorium. I know there's a number in this room that are involved, and I'm sure if you want to jump on a donkey, we have the donkey sheriff right here, Mr. Wiley. So, contact him. Tuesday, May 5th, Come Say Farewell to Police Chief Bob Larson, U-Pass Cultural Center at 5:30. He's, he's been with us for thirty-five years, so it'll be a great event, and everybody is welcome. And then on Thursday, May 7th, the Chamber Lunch and Learn, Get Your Head Into the Cloud, and How Cloud Computing Affects Your Business is the, is the title. It's at the U-Pass Cultural Center, 11:30 to 1:00, and you can call the Chamber at 687-9885 to register. That is all I have for my announcements, and I have no other reports. I'm going to go to Mr. Schaefer. I know you have something for us tonight.
Actually, I have two topics. First, I want to say that at 4:00 yesterday afternoon here in the chambers, we had a presentation from the state demographer. Very interesting discussion. She showed not only the demographics from today, but looked at the forecast out to 2040. Great presentation. I understand she has also added some additional charts based on questions that were asked there today. The presentation is on the city website now?
Yes.
All right. Anyone in the audience, was that that presentation yesterday afternoon?
No.
We had, the room was full, standing room only. So, good discussion. The audience was energized, and I thought we all learned something from that presentation. So, I would encourage you to look at it on the website. Second topic. Council, mayor, city manager, and city attorney were notified by email from me through Suzanne that I am making a request for the city to provide $5,000 to start building a fund which will allow us to contract with a consultant who does this kind of busy, business, rather, to do a housing needs assessment for Woodland Park and Teller County. And the reason we need to raise some funds is that we haven't been able to find any otherwise. I asked, or met with David. I am meeting with the city managers of Cripple Creek, and I have a meeting scheduled with the city manager at Victor. And so, I wanted to be able to say to them, "We're kicking in $5,000, and how much can you contribute?" I'm also talking with some private bankers and merchants and others. So, my objective is to raise $25,000. We may not need it all, but we will certainly need a significant part of that to get a comprehensive housing assessment done. The last one was done in 2005, so it's ten years old. So, as we establish a baseline for a group that is meeting now to draft a ten-year strategic plan for Teller County for affordable housing, and we think this is a necessary step to establish a good baseline. So what I would like my colleagues to do is first, see if they've got any questions and comments. And after we finish that discussion, then I would like for us as a council to ask our city manager, or to direct him, if you will, to find $5,000 for this activity. Questions? Comments?
No, go ahead.
No, go right ahead.
How would we determine who would perform this housing needs assessment?
I've talked with three companies who are well-known in the business, and they are all interested, and they all happen to be working on other assessments. One of the things I asked them to do was provide some sample products of assessments they've done early recently with communities the size of Woodland Park, rural communities, in other words. And we have gotten those from them, and I think we'll have no difficulty finding one of them that will do a good job for us. And the question, of course, is going to boil down to how much they want. We have completed a work scope, and I actually provided that work scope to two of those companies today. And we will be meeting with them, and it may be by phone or by Skype, to discuss their background and experience and what they can do for us.
So, is it possible to have at least two bid on it, so we have some competitive bidding?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Have at least two, perhaps three.
And approximate timeframe with this, once you begin it, would be how long to complete it?
We'd like to have the contractor, the selected contractor, working by the first of January.
And you think it'd be completed in three to six months, that kind of thing?
Three months, possibly four, because I've, I've asked those questions of the potential contractors.
Thanks, John.
John, I'm wondering, is one of those three the same that performed for us ten years ago?
No, they are not. The, we had three companies that worked on the last one. We don't want three companies this time around. We want a single contractor. They may choose to collaborate, but I don't think so. And so fundamentally, what we will be doing is looking at the funds that we have and then deciding what it is we want to get done and see if we can do that for as few dollars as possible.
So, your estimate is about $25,000 that it will cost?
Twenty, twenty-five.
That's an educated guess?
Educated. The assessment that was done back in 2005 and '06 had a price of, I don't know whether it was 50 or 55,000, but part of that was, a significant part of it, was funded by DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs. And they don't have funds to do that anymore, because I've talked with them. And a couple of other Colorado agencies that I thought might provide some funding.
And if this money is, if the process will start in January, will this be reflected in the 2016 budget for David, or that's money that we'll need prior to that?
Will come out of the budget now.
Thoughts, Mr. Butter?
The council's well-aware that we're undergoing significant capital projects, and I've talked about funds and other capital expenditures. I've wrestled with this one a bit. What I concluded was that this $5,000 is a needed investment for our future. It starts the step for this housing assessment. We heard some of the things that the state demographer said yesterday. There are some issues with housing. We know that that spectrum of housing in Woodland Park doesn't exist. That will help us identify that. I think there are dominoes that fall after that that relate to younger families moving in, younger families with kids that help our school system. I think this is a small investment in our future. And if council directs me to find that $5,000, I think we'll be, well, I don't want to say I think, I can be successful in finding that $5,000. And not risk our capital projects.
John, I'm just concerned that Cripple Creek slash Victor and others may not step up. Do you anticipate, if that doesn't happen, you'll come back to us and say, "We're going to need 10,000 instead of five"?
No.
What happens if we only have five?
I won't come back. Well, we'll do something, and we may not get all that we want, feel that we need, but we'll make it work. And I wanted to be able to go to the city managers of the other two municipalities and say that Woodland Park has kicked in 5,000. Now, what can you do for us? Otherwise, they might ask me the obvious question, "How much is Woodland Park contributing?" And I'd like to be able to say 5,000.
Yeah. I do support this, as I have told you, John. And with, the only caveat is kind of to begin immunizing against the political, and that is the name change, from affordable housing to workforce and senior housing, because that really is what I think we're talking about specifically. And the, when, I was on council when the previous assessment was done, and there was a kind of a political stigma associated with that. And it's not just here, it's nationally. And not for unjustified reasons. There's a history of public funding extensively for, for the various housing projects, and not all of them, to put it charitably, have been successful or good use of taxpayers' money. Not that this would involve that, that would be very modest. So, with that caveat and recommended name change, I do support this request.
Mr. Sawyer, you look like you're ready to talk.
I'm processing a question here. So, what are we gonna, we're gonna, we already know we need affordability, the workforce housing, I'm sorry. So, the assessment's going to do, what is it going to just tell us where we need the housing, what population group, or what age group? And then, is it going to give us ideas on, on where we can go get funding, or organizations we can go to? What is the outcome, once we get it?
Well, there'll be several outcomes. What we are asking for is that the consultant, that the contractor's going to provide what we call a housing bridge- that the contractor's gonna provide what we call a housing bridge, which looks at the number of households against the area median income. It's called a bridge because it looks like a rainbow or half a donut. And so, what it does is it segregates households by income levels as a percent of the area median income, which is roughly 62,000 here in Woodland Park. So, it recognizes how many households we have, and it might surprise you to know that we have about 700 households now in Woodland Park who owns, who, whose income is 60% or less. And so, that's a significant part of the 3,000 households we have here. What they're also gonna do is, you know, identify, give us more detail, because the last assessment is 10 years old, as I mentioned. How many do we have now, and what are the available houses for them? And we might see that for, we have about one quarter of the houses that we need that are affordable, that current population requires. And another thing that we see in the data is some people live in affordable housing by the 0 to 60% AMI that actually make more, because they're living in these houses now. And so, another telling statistic is that 76% of those who rent in Woodland Park now are cost burden, which means they spend more than 30% of their annual income on housing, rent and utilities. And so, it'll give us some idea, and we've not asked just for the 0 to 60%, but a full spectrum assessment of what the situation is. And as the demographer showed us yesterday, if you look at the ages in the twenties and the thirties, they're significantly less than there were some years ago. And we probably understand that as a result of recession and the fact that the middle class, no doubt, particularly those who are involved in construction. So, we're gonna be told those kinds of things. They will be offering some options for us, but the strategic plan which we're working on, and this assessment will feed that strategic plan, which I promised to have by the end of the year, and we're on track to do that, will tell us the extent to which we need affordable housing. The 2005, 2006 report said we need 440 houses just to catch up here in Teller County and 220 in Woodland Park. So, yes, we know we need houses, but we're gonna make certain we got a good baseline or benchmark now. How bad is the problem, and what can we do about it?
Okay. I just, we already know we need housing. I mean, do we, why are we gonna spend 5,000 to know what we already know?
Well, we'll know how many.
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, we need 100, right?
Well, we may need 100, it may tell us we need 500.
But we didn't, did we add any since the last assessment?
Houses?
Yeah.
Sure.
But affordable houses, or workforce houses?
Really not. And if you look at trail ridge apartments, not a single one of those units is affordable.
So, the 2006 assessment, we probably spent, how much?
I think 50,000.
50,000.
Yeah. Really?
Yeah.
So, 5,000 is a deal.
Yeah, and it is. And if I could also follow up, I think the key to this, and I wouldn't support it if it weren't primarily a market-based ultimately plan, and it is, and I've been convinced of that by John, the other thing this does is besides providing a kind of matrix, it provides the direction for the market. And markets like to have confidence in data before they begin committing capital, because the margins on these things are very, very tight. So, by spending really what amounts to a very small amount of money from the city's budgetary perspective, we can provide guidance to the market to begin having confidence that what is needed at the various thresholds of AMI, adjusted median income, so that they begin doing the work based on that versus feeling the market out and trying to spend a lot of time and money to determine what the needs are. So, you're effectively using some seed money to jumpstart the process and guarantee a better outcome.
But Phil, I think what Noel wants to know is, we're gonna come up with the same assessment as we had, or something similar, maybe the numbers might change, but would you agree that the roadblock really is to what you said, the margin is so small, if you're a contractor, tell me what's gonna change from 10, 11 years ago relative to somebody stepping up and saying, "I wanna be part of that project, I wanna develop that project for you," knowing that this is a small margin, and I can go build one house somewhere and make as much money. Isn't that one of the key issues that we faced before?
But I would offer an answer to that, is we have one vehicle now that we didn't have 10 years ago, and that's the nonprofit affordable housing organization. And, you know, we, we have our first project that we're now, we will be submitting an application to the Colorado Housing Finance and Authority the first of May, and that's for a 9% tax credit deal. Very competitive, there are no assurances, you know, we will get approved. As a matter of fact, that particular property, which is on the corner of Valley View and Highway 67 by the community church, has been disapproved by CHAFA the last two years. We've got a different management team now, different configuration, fewer number of units we're gonna build. Those 24 units will all be affordable from 30, 40, 50, 60% AMI and less. So, we're optimistic. Brian Flair and Keith Meyer and I, we are the board for this nonprofit, that we're gonna be building affordable housing here in Woodland Park. We have a couple of other sites as well.
And just to follow up, the other thing that's changed, which I think is significant and worthy of note, is that the construction. We don't have, one doesn't have to build using traditional materials, stick build. There are other methods which are more sophisticated than they were even 10 years ago. I won't go into detail, but I've seen some of these things in terms of the building options. They're less expensive. So, the margins that were historically unachievable and weren't, and made it unattractive for many people who wanted to invest are less so now. I think the margins are a little more inviting, and I also think that the political momentum is stronger, without which it wouldn't get off the ground.
If I could make one quick comment, one of the things I think it also benefits is our ability to go to other entities to ask for assistance. We've done that with CHAFA. But having this data that is rock solid and verifiable, and has come from a professional consultant, yes, the market drives many of these decisions on what contractors will do, but frankly, when there's some intervention, it makes that process a bit simpler and makes their opportunity for profit a little bit stronger.
And let me just address your comment, Phil. We are considering modular housing now. We're also looking at an estimate at stick build, and we haven't had to make that decision yet.
And just to, for the footnote, if you, the word modular, everyone begins conjuring up these kind of pejorative connotations, but if you've seen, and I have, the design work and what they physically look like, you will be pleasantly surprised at the quality. They're vastly superior of anything you've seen in the past that's been modularly built. And so, they're attractive, they're not something which is second-class. It's very nice-looking projects at less money.
Well, one thing I think is important, and I think you all agree, we need to, I hate to say it, we need to drop the affordable and get that out of the conversation.
I've been pushing that for a while now.
And it's really, really important, politically, more than anything else. Would you agree?
No, I agree, and depending on the audience, we may use the term affordable or not. Workforce and senior, we've talked about, as a matter of fact, that's on the title of our strategic plan now, the draft version. David raised another point, well, why couldn't other people rent these kinds of units? And, you know, they could, if they can meet the qualifications that are required, and those are income-driven.
It's means-tested.
Yes.
Yeah. So, there's an upper limit, though, is the point. But just to put a finer point at, you know, affordable housing is kind of like a Rorschach test. People impute different things to it based on the predispositions. Whereas workforce housing and senior housing is prescriptive. It gets people thinking along certain lines. And, what, we don't support workforce housing? I mean, it becomes kind of a thing for the person to defend, an argument against. And so, what we're talking about is the ability of, you know, nurses, firefighters, police officers, schoolteachers, to have the same ability to live in the community where they work. And I think that, I think that's very important, and in particular the senior floor. We don't wanna have to retire here and then say, "Now, where do I move?" Because I can no longer afford to live here, having lived here for 15 or 20 years. So, I think the more prescriptive we can be, the stronger the argument becomes.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. And I think a startling demographic that we saw yesterday, I just was surprised by the number. The state demographer said that, showed us the data, that says 83% of the people live here, you know, have at least, you can correct me if I misstate this, Sally, have at least one member of that household working outside Woodland Park, whether it's down the pass or out in the county somewhere. And that's a surprising number. I've been using the number like 60%. 83%. Wouldn't it be nice if we could have those kinds of people that Phil alluded to, live here in a community? Wouldn't it be nice to have the teachers live here, where you may have made the point earlier? You get to know them, you get to meet with them, as opposed to their living in Colorado City or Manitou or in this ring somewhere. I think the time is ripe, and we're working toward that objective. Let's get a good set of data, as David said, and we can use that as part of the argument. And funds do open up to nonprofit housing organizations. We are learning that, and pleasantly surprised.
I would like to weigh in a little bit. I, torn a little bit, I lean a little bit to what Noel was relating to. I mean, in the 30 years I've been here, we've heard this discussion many, many, many times. So, on one side, I think, you know, what's different? But I think for a relatively small amount of money, some things have changed, community has changed. I think we need to make this kind of an investment to get a good shot at making this happen. And this community needs it, we've talked about it for many years, as I just said. And this is an opportunity, I'm willing to go that, into that camp, an opportunity to help make that happen, and I'm willing to do that.
Well, one of the big things that changes in, of course, one of my passions is our public schools and our declining enrollment, and the 25 to 40-year-olds just simply can't afford to live here. And it's been proven now, the demographer reiterated that yesterday. And so, in my opinion, that's kind of where I fall. I think that, that group, that demographic we're really missing in our community, the rest of us just continue to get further.
You noticed.
Well, John, I appreciate the hard work. What do we need to do to get some consensus on this? Can we just, by a show of hands, say?
We just give David the ability to go out? I would also like to ask for the, do you have the 2006 assessment?
No, it's available.
Is it available?
It's available, yeah.
Yep.
Sally, did you have a comment?
Okay. And then, yeah, I'm okay with it. I'm still set back at the cost of it prior in 2006. That's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
So, 5,000 is...
They're getting off easy.
But, but I think like 37,500 came from DOLA.
No, it was heavily subsidized.
Yeah. But, the other community did kick in.
It's still indirectly public money, so.
Sure.
Anyway, I would absolutely support it. I guess we just go from there.
Everybody agreed?
If we can find the funds, I think we'll...
I hope you can get the, great in Victor.
Well, now you know.
We need to make it a community of the county.
I've talked with a local banker, local realtor, yeah. I'm learning to twist arms.
Well, if you have any problem, I can make him an offer he can't refuse. Sounds like a guy from Chicago.
Well, I thank you for your support, gentlemen.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
The money won't, the money will not be wasted.
Anything else, John?
Isn't that enough?
It is.
Noel? Thank you.
I have nothing.
Phil?
No, sir.
I do have a couple of things. As the council representative for Keep Woodland Park Beautiful, I'd just like to congratulate the winners we had earlier for the Bear Aware Program that were presented with their awards, and that great program. Also, comment that the Aspen Valley Ranch Earth Day Event will be April 22nd. I can't remember if you said that or not.
It was not on this list.
Okay, from 10 to 2, April 22nd, Earth Day Event, Aspen Valley Ranch. Also, Kiwanis, or, I mean, Kiwanis, you can tell where I'm from. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful was awarded a certificate of appreciation for their effort for the fiscal year 2014, and that will be posted in the entryway of City Hall for everyone to see. It's a very hard-working group, a lot of volunteers putting in a lot of time. And really, we're blessed to have them working for our community, believe me. That's all.
Great, thanks very much. Okay, we'll move on. Aaron's not with us today. Mr. Butter?
Couple of things that aren't on the agenda, council. I think at your place, as you have a reminder about the Woodland Park Historical Mural Project, they're moving full forth. What a great project this is to recognize the history of our community in an extremely public place. So, I encourage you to get that word out to as many people as you possibly can. Second thing, the council is aware, and certainly many in the community, that we had a very serious traffic accident on April 6th at Walmart in US Highway 24. And it was an incident where a driver ran a red light. I had asked our police department in the past to pay more attention to red light runners. I, I think they're idiots, and I think we need to stop that. And after this event occurred, we immediately increased enforcement, and we've gotten cooperation from other entities. And unfortunately, the gentleman that was injured in that accident passed away on Saturday. He was in the vehicle that had the green light. And so, someone ran a red light and ended this man's life, and the life of his wife as she knows it. I'd like Miles to talk a little bit about some of the things that his department is doing, the cooperation that we're receiving from others, and things that we're doing as a community to stop this.
Thank you, Ms. Butter. Mayor, members of the council, we've been doing a number of things since, actually before this occurred. One of the things we've been doing is reaching out to the other agencies in our area, working in conjunction with State Patrol as well as the Sheriff's Office. We've got dedicated officers that are working the red light violations. I spoke with our court clerk recently, and she said that she's literally overwhelmed with the number of contacts that we've been making in terms of trying to curb this behavior. Mr. Butter has been working with me and getting some of the businesses within the city to address this on their VMS and their digital signs, which is great. I've also been in contact with the Public Information Officer with CDOT, and they'll be changing their VMS signs over as soon as the weather improves a little bit in the next day or so, until about the 26th of this month, to bring additional awareness as people are coming in from both ends of the city. We are also going to be assisting the family tomorrow in the funeral procession. I've assigned one of our patrol sergeants to, to help them out with this. Any questions?
Since you've kind of updated surveillance, what have we seen? Have you been given a number of tickets for people running red lights?
Absolutely, sir. One officer's averaging close to a dozen tickets per shift. And it's not, when we're issuing tickets, it's not an iffy ticket. These people are getting tickets when it's clearly red, there's no excuse, and then these people are coming through the intersection.
And I'm guessing some of those were with police stationed there and not hiding somewhere?
We're sitting in a marked SUV in the middle of plain view for everybody to see us. We're not making...
The sign that says, "Don't run the red light."
Yeah, as much, as obvious as we can. We want me, we want people to be aware of what's going on so we can curb their behavior. Yes, sir.
I heard it, maybe it was rumored, is CDOT doing some adjustment on the cycling of the lights as well?
I'll speak to that, Miles. Yes. There's a timeframe when lights are red in all directions, and that time is called lag time. And the lag time at, at least the Walmart intersection has been increased. So, lights are red in all directions longer than they were prior to this accident. I don't know the specifics on how many seconds, but that lag time has been increased.
Do we have any surveillance of intersections? Have we thought about that?
Surveillance in what way?
Video?
Cameras.
Cameras?
As in red light cameras, running red lights and issuing, that, that would, I think, be an issue that the council should wrestle with. It's successful in some communities, in some communities, it's just politically not a sound thing to do. I told a news reporter yesterday, I don't want the city of Woodland I, I told a, a news reporter yesterday, I don't want the city of Woodland Park to be known as a speed trap. It's okay with me if the city of Woodland Park is known as a "don't run red light" trap, because I don't think anybody can argue with the ridiculousness of running a red light. You can argue that going three miles an hour with a speed limit, it's an okay thing to do. So, surveillance is something that we would need to consider. People think it's a, a trap, they think it's a way that cities generate revenue. I can tell you that the amount of revenue that we make from writing tickets doesn't pay for a single police officer, so it's just a fallacy in what people think. If it's something you'd like for us to pursue, we could certainly do that. I'd ask you to let us try this for a little while before we make that investment. Don't know that CDOT would let us do it, it's their highway.
Sorry, I guess that's my intro.
You betcha.
You betcha. I've noticed it's on twenty-four, sixty-seven light there at City Market. I'll literally see a red light run three or four times a week, I'll see it at the Safeway, and I will always see it at the Walmart. I would like to look into red light cameras. I think that would start to warn people and spread the word a little bit more about Woodland Park, and I know you don't want us to be a speed trap, but we used to be. People used to be afraid to speed through Woodland Park. So, I don't know what's changed, because people do speed through Woodland Park. I would, I have seen the, the increase in, in law, the police around, and it's great. And, so I would, as council, I would consider red light cameras. I think that would be an option, but we'd have to look forward in the budget, obviously.
Well, and what other communities have experience as well?
Yeah, we'd have to look around, but the bottom line is, it's getting worse. If I'm seeing it, I'm seeing it all three lights every week, I mean, it's not once in a while, once a month, it is weekly that I see it. And so, in fact, I've learned not to go when the light turns green. I wait like five seconds.
That's the second part of the lesson. If, if you're dead or seriously injured, it doesn't matter if you were right, the person that ran the red light that hit you, it doesn't matter. And so, one of my, my pleas to the community is teach your children the right way to drive, drive defensively, look both ways, even if you've got the green light, make sure you are safe, because that man that pulled into the intersection, he was on a green light, he had every right to be where he was. So, yeah, absolutely, that's part of the message as well.
And I noticed, Miles, in the monthly report from the PD, that one of the categories is not just tickets, but there's warnings and verbals. And I know that's very discretionary, and I think that's an important component of the tools in your quiver, but I would, I would strongly support fewer warnings. If people, and speed trap, to me, that is just, again, this pejorative connotation, the Springs would issue more tickets, but they're busy doing other things, but, but we need to be enforcing the laws. If it says thirty miles an hour, to me, that means you set it on thirty and leave it there, doesn't mean thirty-five. Now, we know, I know people who run businesses downtown, and people routinely go through there at forty-five miles an hour plus. And so, it's not just running red lights, but if you're driving too fast and the pedestrian steps out in the street, you could have another problem. So, I think we just need to strongly support the law enforcement efforts and be a hundred percent behind them as a first step to this tragedy. And the individual who perished lives two houses down from us, and it was horrible.
One thing I'd like to, in your discussions with CDOT, because I drive that way multiple times a day, first of all, the wisdom of having, from the Safeway light to that light, increasing the speed, makes no sense to me, because they're speed them up to possibly make them slow down. That, I think, needs to be addressed and may possibly change. I think that, that doesn't help the situation on that light. And then, the other thing is, coming up the hill to that light towards Woodland Park, they have a flashing light that tells you when it's going to turn. They don't have that going down.
The flashing yellow lights are, are really the entrance and exit points for communities. If you go to the far west side of town, prior to Trout Creek Road, there is the flashing yellow, and the intent is, the flashing yellow says, "There are a whole series of signal lights in front of you." So, the one that's before Walmart is saying the same thing, "There are a whole bunch of signal lights in front of you." And so, the, the other place that that exists is in Cascade. I don't believe it exists in Divide.
I understand that, and, and if they reduce that speed limit from Safeway down to Walmart, maybe that wouldn't be an issue, but to, to tell people, "You can speed up here," and then all of a sudden the light changes, there's a conflict there, I think.
You know, we've been working with CDOT for eighteen years to try to get the speeds in the town and on the periphery reduced. We will keep working that effort.
Well, you have a little more leverage now.
We do, it is true. It's a sad truth.
And another thing is, is going down sixty-seven, where I turn to the Tamarack, that's fifty miles an hour, I mean, five miles an hour more, that's a highway speed. And on the highway, you have fifty-five going down to the Springs. I, I don't understand why that's fifty. And obviously, your officers know that, because they go to turn there at the police station, and they have people coming right up on their, their tail. I mean, I, I, it, it, I actually have to get out of the way and come into the oncoming, because people are going so fast. Is there any chance that there's a discussion with CDOT about that?
Oh, absolutely. Like I said, we've been talking speed with CDOT for eighteen years.
Can you just give me a, a wrench? I'll go take some signs from...
Civil disobedience, okay, in some instances.
Not this one.
Hey.
No, it's a frustrating thing.
Yes, it's very frustrating.
Well, and here's the issue with CDOT, for me, it always has been, they're so reactive and not proactive at all, and it takes something like this just to get the lag time changed, they wouldn't have done it prior to this. So, I think it's important, and the conversation may be exhausted today, but I think it's important to keep this conversation alive, and at one point, maybe to have the city look at other options. What else can we do? I know you're very passionate about this, as, as we all are. Unfortunately, we don't have these discussions until somebody gets killed, so let's not let the ball drop on this and, and do everything we can to move forward. And I know CDOT's pretty much got our hands tied, but we have some good relationships with them, and I think that Karen Rowe, who's the, the CDOT Region Two Director, will be here at the May sixth meeting to talk about Highway twenty-four and the new closing protocol, if you will, and so, that might be a good time to query her and to, and discuss our concerns, so keep that in mind.
Do we have, I notice some communities will put strips across to count cars, count speed, because they'll put them a certain distance, and then they'll tell how fast a car was from A to B, and do we have anything like that in our department?
No, but again, remember, Highway twenty-four and sixty-seven don't belong to us.
That's bothering me.
So, CDOT does those speed studies when we ask them to do that. I challenged the last one based on my interpretation of a state statute. Karen Rowe, our Region Two Director, ran my objection up to the Chief of Counsel for CDOT, and he did not agree with my assessment. So, yes, we can do that. What CDOT's bound to do by Colorado statutes is if the speed study says that the speed should be increased, they're obligated to increase it. So, they could look to us and say, "Do you really want us to do a speed study? We got Highway twenty-four down to thirty, based on an interpretation by the Chief Engineer of CDOT, that there wasn't sufficient sight distance. If we ran that again today, I can guarantee you that that speed would be back up to thirty-five." They raised the speed limit from, from Thirty-first Street to Eighth Street. If you think about it, it was forty-five, and they bumped it up to fifty-five, because everybody was going faster. So, they base their speed on a highway based on people's behavior. That's why we need to change the behavior. One of the things that will help in the future is the signalization at Center Street, it absolutely will help. We will continue to do this. I, I pled with the predecessor of Karen Rowe, I pled with the Chief Engineer at CDOT, "Get our speed limit to twenty-five in, in Woodland Park, I don't care how you do it, just get it done." They won't. So, anything we can do, I would encourage us to be prepared to ask Karen questions. We don't need to pile on, we just need to say, "This is a real concern for us, it's our main street, it's our main street." So, my, one, my other comment is, we have been proactive in the past, we don't wait for accidents to occur. It's why there's the pedestrian crosswalk system at Center Street today. CDOT did not want to put anything there. We were proactive and said, "Get something in there, because it's ridiculous." So, we paid for half of that. So, we do try to be proactive, not reactive, as opposed to some of the things that they do.
My concern is more, sorry. My concern is the Safeway light, that one probably has the most accidents, I don't know if you can correct me on that one. That should be maybe thirty-five.
We will work on that. You know, once we, we start in the center of town and work our way out to slow things down, or start on the outskirts and work our way in. The highway, the twenty-four Safeway intersection, it's just goofy geometry.
Truly.
We've changed all kinds of timing and striping and everything to make it safer. The bottom line is, people get a, a greater degree of confidence, once they clear Eagle Fire, you know, it's just kind of wide open, and there's, then the split median, and so, they think they can go faster than they probably should, and the speed limit's forty-five here. We will continue to pursue it, because we, we want to be in that proactive mode. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks very much. Thank you all.
The, the lady who's coming here, Karen, whatever her name is, that's going to be the council meeting?
Rowe, I believe on May sixth is, or May seventh, whenever the next council meeting is.
May seventh.
May seventh. I'm trying to get her here for that date. And also, trying to get her to talk to the Chamber Board, which anybody would be, I'm sure Deb would let anybody come for that discussion, which would be on, I believe, the thirteenth is, in May, they have it on the second Wednesday of the month. So, anyway, working on that and, and hope to see Karen up here, and I don't know if we shouldn't pile on, but we, we, we need to...
Respectfully.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Tough.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have no comments on written correspondence, and I appreciate you all coming out in bad weather tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.